2024 Hamilton County Meeting, Staff Meeting Today, and I'm going to ask everybody to introduce themselves on the dais.
Chrissy Rushell, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. We're going to get started with our first agenda item, the Home ARP program overview, Maria Collins.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
President Reese, Vice President Dreehouse, and Commissioner Dumas, it's good to see you all again, it's been a little while. But you'll be seeing a little bit more of me as we move through the next few months. Today I'm here actually to provide an overview about the, oh, I'm sorry, my clicker. There we go, thank you. So today I'm here to provide an overview about the Hamilton County's Home ARP Plan, and to introduce a substantial amendment that is being requested to the Home ARP Allocation Plan. The American Rescue Plan Act included $5 million, a billion dollars nationwide to be allocated by HUD through the Home Investment Partnership Program, also known as HOME. Hamilton County received $5.4 million of that allocation from HUD for our Home ARP program. This is of course a one-time funding opportunity that is separate from our annual county, annual home program allocation. This funding must primarily benefit qualifying populations, and it also has to be spent by September 2030. Congress intent is for all four QPs to benefit from Home ARP. Activities that address homelessness instability and housing instability and homelessness. Participating jurisdictions must design their programs to provide all four QPs with access to Home ARP projects and activities. In March 2023, Hamilton County approved funds for the following Home ARP eligible activities: supportive services, affordable rental housing, nonprofit operating, and administration. The Board also approved a new program manager position in community development to oversee the implementation and monitoring of the county's Home ARP program. Now, the four qualifying populations, the way that they break down is qualifying population 1 is for those, that population that is defined as homeless per the Code of Federal Regulations 24 CFR 91.5. QP 2 is the population that is at risk of homelessness, also defined in 24 CFR 91.5. QP 3 is a population that is fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking. And QP 4 are the other populations that are not included above but meet the criteria for other families requiring services or housing assistance to prevent homelessness, and those at greatest risk of housing instability. The substantial amendment that's being introduced today is because a growing need for shelter space was raised by stakeholders. Non-congregate shelters were seen as a need in the initial assessment, but omitted to prioritize rental housing. Further data emerged demonstrating a particular need for shelter for those fleeing domestic violence and sexual assault. The Needs Gap Assessment also showed a need to give preference for rental housing to those with the greatest level of housing instability. So in response, community development is seeking to amend Hamilton County's Home ARP Allocation Plan to include non-congregate shelter, which would allow limitation for shelter projects serving those fleeing domestic violence and human trafficking, which is QP 3, and allowing rental projects to implement a preference for persons and families experiencing or at risk of homelessness, which are in QPs 1 and 2. HUD specifically expected for needs to change over time, and wanted the participating jurisdictions to make amendments if and when they were needed. The budget that was approved in March 23 for the Home ARP Allocation Program, Allocation Program or Plan, was allocated as follows. $1 million of the $5.4 million budget was allocated for supportive services. $3.7 million was allocated for the development of affordable rental housing. $273 million was awarded for nonprofit operating. And administration and planning was allocated $491,361. The amended budget would remove $400,000 from the development of affordable rental housing, and move it to acquisition and development of non-congregate shelters, leaving $3.3 million for the development of affordable rental housing. Now, preferences and limitations. Preferences are used to establish the order in which participants are admitted to housing or provided services. A preference provides a priority in the selection of applicants for a project or activity among all four QPs, or who are in a specific category or sub-population within a QP. Limitations are restrictions on eligibility for a Home ARP project or activity. The approved preferences does not establish preferences for any of the qualifying populations, and would utilize a project-based intake and qualification system for applicants. Members of all four qualifying populations would be eligible to apply for all activities. The county will use a project-specific waiting list for their Home ARP activities as necessary. Applicants can directly apply for Home ARP projects or activities and referrals from nonprofit organizations and/or the coordinated entry system, which would also be accepted. All applicants would be selected on a first-come, first-served basis, in a chronological order, based on the date of the application and received, and regardless of the referral method used. The amended preferences would allow for rental housing, permanent supportive housing, projects that implement preferences for individuals and households who are eligible under the homelessness and at-risk-of-homelessness qualifying populations, QP 1 and QP 2. The projects may work within the Cincinnati-Hamilton County Continuum of Care Coordinated Entry System. For the projects, for projects that use the coordinated entry system for assessment and referral to Home ARP projects, there will be prioritization for chronically homeless households, households with the most severe needs and levels of vulnerability, including vulnerability from violence, safety concerns, medical behavioral vulnerability, and age. Those youth that are from between the ages of 18 and 24, and seniors that are 55 and above. Prioritization will comply with the Cincinnati-Hamilton County Continuum of Cares Coordinated Entry Policies. Now, projects will not be required to implement the preferences. We are just allowing for them the ability to do so, and in helping target the funding to the greatest needs within the communities. In our approved, Home ARP Approved Allocation Plan, Hamilton County does not intend to limit eligibility for any Home ARP rental housing project. This only mentions rental housing because non-congregate shelters was not a part of the plan at the time it was approved in March. Amended limitations. The county will allow for project-specific eligibility limitations for non-congregate shelter projects that exclusively serve the fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking qualifying populations, which is QP 3. The allowance of this limitation is consistent with best practices for ensuring the safety and providing specialized services to individuals and families in this population. No otherwise eligible individuals or families that meet the definition of this population may be excluded from this project. Projects are not required to implement this limitation, however. We are just allowing for this in order for the project to occur. Essentially HUD wants to ensure we're implementing the program correctly. Our goal would be to show the strategy to target homelessness in our participating jurisdictions. The preferences language also shows our support to end chronic homelessness through our involvement with initiatives such as Built for Zero. Built for Zero is a coalition and partnership with 3CDC and other continuum of care stakeholders to eliminate chronic homelessness in Cincinnati and Hamilton County. That is the end of my presentation, thanks for your attention, are there any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Since we're entering the new year, I just wanted to remind people who may be watching, we as a board just does not deal with the $40 million that we put toward affordable housing. I just want people to have a clear understanding of that. I do have a couple of questions, so one of my questions. I had a chance to tour the YWCA new project that they're, for domestic violence housing that they're going to have, and it seems to be in line with what we're trying to, if we were to change this. And I had put that in one of my budget requests, but was told that maybe we could look at some other funds. And I wanted to- And I wanted to find out, could this possibly, would they, that type of project, be able to compete for these dollars if we were to make that type of change? Because I think their housing is unique and different, I think. And I think that something that they said we don't have here in Hamilton County. So I just wanted to check to see if that would, would they be allowed to compete for these type of dollars?
Well, actually, Commissioner Reese, this is exactly why we're requesting to include limitations in our plan to allow for agency exactly like the YWCA to utilize it in projects where they are renovating or creating non-congregant shelter. So, yes.
So I'm glad that we're able to look at some of the things that we put forward and make sure sometimes unintentionally we have rules that lock people out. And now we're able to try to fix those rules. Wanted to also ask about the homelessness. I know you mentioned one group. Is this the strategies to end homelessness and other groups a part of that group as far as trying to work on housing for homeless populations?
So the preferences do allow for funding to go towards agencies and projects such as permanent supportive housing projects that utilize the continuum of care. But funds are not directly going to strategies. However, they are eligible or to apply for funding from our other programs, which like the supportive services and nonprofit operating.
And then my final question, I know it's not in here, but a lot of times we're looking at what we should also be open to. I am concerned when we talk about not just homelessness, but veteran. Is there, do we have anything from, or any, are there any qualifications with our funds for housing for homeless veterans? Is there any preferences with them?
Not specifically stating like with the domestic abuse and sexual assault housing, the limitation for housing that's exclusively for that population. We don't have anything that specifically states veteran housing and only veteran housing. However, veterans can be housed in any of the other, from any of the other QPs can be housed in any of the other housing types. But there's no limitation to any housing that we have in our budget for just veterans at this time.
Yeah, I just would like to put that as we're moving forward. Administrator Aludo and to my colleagues, something I want to push for is some type of category for veterans. In terms of housing. Because certainly there are many, and there may be some other dollars. Maybe they're not these dollars. But I'd like to be specific and intentional about veteran housing. I don't know if we could do it on this, but maybe I just want to put that on the table. I know we have lobbyists that we have in Washington and others, but I would like to see in one of these housing populations.
Yes, yes. So my team actually just informed me that veterans would have to qualify for one of the QPs in order to be eligible.
Right, but we're making the, we're making the, what the QPs are.
Commissioner, the federal government is...
That's what I was trying to understand.
That's what I was just trying to say earlier, is that the QPs are set by the federal government.
Yes, yes.
It's not our discretionary decision. But to your point, we are actively looking through some of our government affairs organizations in DC, et cetera, at some specific grant funding that might help with a specific veterans program. So we're looking at that actively right now.
Okay, great, thank you. That's why I wanted to find out.
Yeah, we've also looked at that as well because we know there is a great need there. Just that these funds, well, the qualifying populations, as Administrator Aludo just stated, do not specify veterans as a QP.
Gotcha, thank you. Vice President Drew House.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. It's always good to see you and your team. So when you started your presentation, you talked about how there was a group of individuals that had identified individuals fleeing or associated with domestic violence as a priority. And I thought maybe you're going to refer to the county commission. All three of us have said, one way or the other, we want to support this population, particularly related to some of the current projects by the YW and others for building specific housing for this population. So I felt like it was very much on target. I felt like I was hearing our voices in your presentation saying, hey, if we can do something particularly to this, for this population, let's try to do it. So I'm glad that this fits with the government's criteria for how we can utilize these dollars. So thank you for responding to that. And it looks, sounds like we're all on the same page. I wanted to ask a question about the supportive services piece. I've got the chart in front of me where you identify the reallocation of the dollars coming from the affordable rental housing up to the other category. What, though, is involved with the supportive services million-dollar line? Could you help us better understand what's included in that line?
Yeah, yeah, and I might call on my team to assist me with this. But I do know that those funds can be used towards capacity building, salaries, administration, things of that nature.
You come up to the microphone, I'm sorry. They want to be able to hear you and see you.
Hi, my name is LaShay Roach. I'm a program manager under the Community Development Division, specifically working alongside Jake Berghaus as well on the Home ARP Allocation Plan. So for supportive services, that would include case management, street outreach services, housing relocation, and as mentioned, salaries and other funding to help support programming to resolve homelessness, specifically for the four qualifying populations. Our goal is to roll out this funding or some of the supportive service dollars alongside our CDBG nonprofit funding to maximize the amount of nonprofit organizations that we're funding for direct services in the community.
So is it fair to categorize those as operational as opposed to capital?
In some ways, so we do have nonprofit operating funds also. That nonprofit operating funding is not project-specific, though. It is just to help with the ongoing rollout of services for a nonprofit organization.
Okay, yeah, I think in the budget process, as was mentioned, we talked a little bit about capital dollars versus operating dollars and how the county can be supportive and how can we be? We don't do a lot of capital related to the general fund. And so there was this desire to look elsewhere for some capital dollars. So I feel like this is the spot that's been identified, and maybe there are others as well. But I just wanted to get a handle. So this, what you've identified here is a combination of capital and operating?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. You answered most of my questions. I was going to ask if there's going to be an RFP going out, but I see that applicants can directly apply. And so I was also wondering, when will you release the application, what date? And also, are you doing a press release as it relates to this? Because there are some entities that are somewhat smaller that are helping with domestic violence, and we may not know about them. And so I thought maybe a press release might be good. Statistic statistics in this area, they are extremely high. So just really excited about the opportunity to put it toward this effort. I know Bethany House does a lot with domestic violence. It's not their top issue, but they have taken some people in for that. So just so we can give people an opportunity to hear about what you just said and also to announce some sort of John James, and I may be thinking about that now. But you know, sometimes when we talking here, we miss some people that don't watch our meetings. Just to be able to get the little people who are doing this great work. So thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I have one more question, I'm sorry, about the breakout in terms of, just to get clarity, on the administration and planning. 491,367 dollars. And you said percent of the grant is about 7%. Can you explain that? Is that the person that, the entity that's getting the grant? Or is that our office?
That's our office, for us to administer the programs.
Okay, because that's what I was... And is that the standardized percentage?
The statutory limit, which is listed there in the budget, is 15%. Our budgeted amount is only 7% of the total budget. So we're not, we're not getting the full 15%, which statutorily we would be entitled to utilize, but we're taking less than that.
Got you, okay. And then when it has 0% for nonprofit capacity building, that's because the nonprofit has already have the capacity?
Yes.
Is that why it's there?
The not, let me just get to this real quick. Yeah, we didn't, if it's zero, then it wasn't funded. The only thing we funded were the four activities.
Got you, okay.
Yeah, the four activities that are listed there. And now we're going to include a fifth activity with the non-congregant shelters.
Okay, great. No, I think that's good because it seems like our dollars are going right to actionable things directly helping the people.
Exactly.
That was great, so I wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
One last question to you and to your team. So with this recategorization of the funding amounts, how did you arrive at the 400,000? I see a smile. Knew it was coming.
Well, so we have been, I guess you could say strategically working with the city of Cincinnati and administering our Home ARP allocation plan. And because the affordable rental housing budget that we have in our plan, we know it's going to be, just from, just historically, it's more difficult to get, have affordable rental housing built or developed with, outside of the Cincinnati, the city of Cincinnati, within Hamilton County. So we had a conversation when we went back out to the stakeholders to talk to them about limitations and preferences. It was brought to our attention that there is an agency that is in fact developing non-congregant shelter for domestic violence population, so on and so forth. And talking with them, hearing about their project, their budget, we saw an opportunity there to allocate or provide them with some of our funding towards non-congregant shelter. We know that the city of Cincinnati is also, has funding in this project as well. So the budget is pretty significant for this project. And we did not want to exceed what the city is putting in because one of the requirements for us to fund housing projects within the city's jurisdiction is the city has to make a substantial investment. So they are making a substantial investment. And so we're coming in, we've looked at this amount as being below what the city's putting in, but still significant enough to help advance this project forward. They had a very large gap that they were trying to close in order to move forward with the next phase of this project. So we identified a project that we knew would directly and immediately benefit residents outside of Cincinnati. We identified this as an opportunity for non-congregant shelter that historically or more than likely would not be developed outside of Cincinnati. So it was an opportunity for us to assist in that capacity as well as benefit the residents that are outside of the city of Cincinnati.
I have a follow-up question. All right, so now I have more questions than I did earlier because you're reminding me that sometimes when we get money from the federal government, it has to be spent outside the city of Cincinnati, unless there are qualifying, you know, things that the city is doing.
Permanent supportive housing and things of that nature.
Yes, so I am wondering then, because this is a competitive process and organizations can apply for these dollars. And so while there may be something that is, you know, been brought to the attention of some folks, everybody can apply. So I am just wondering about this dollar amount now and the intersection between the city, if there are projects in the city, what we can do related to that and how we manage that, right? Because they have to put in, as you say, a substantial amount before we can even enter into.
Correct.
So that's, I think, intriguing. And then, and that does not happen when projects are happening outside the city where we just offer what we, we don't have to worry about what the city is doing at all. So I don't know. I don't mean to question the advice and the recommendation of yourself and your team. I do, though, wonder about the 400,000. And I only wonder if it should go up a little bit as opposed to sitting at this level. But I don't, I don't know enough about some of the other projects and what the city is up to, to rely on that.
So, and also, let me just add that this, we have discussed this with the CDAC Committee. We've also discussed the particular project that in question here with the CDAC Committee. They feel this is a good project as well as a good opportunity. Also, to your point, Commissioner Drew House, one of the concerns is that, you know, as I said, historically, it's difficult to find a builder to build affordable rental housing within or outside of the city of Cincinnati. So we have been working with the city to identify other project, housing development projects that they're doing within, within the city where we could possibly also utilize or leverage their funds by allocating some of our funds towards those projects. There are several permanent supportive housing projects that they're doing that they've shared with us that may provide an opportunity to, for the county to also insert some dollars into as well. So that's one of the strategies that we're doing because of the difficulties with getting this type of housing developed outside of the city is to, where can we tie in with the city and utilize some of our funds and be in compliance with, you know, it being permanent supportive housing or housing that addresses homelessness and things of that nature? So there is a few, maybe a few other opportunities for rental affordable housing where we can also provide some of our Home ARP funds to as well for projects that will be happening within the city's jurisdiction. We've also been talking with some other agencies that we know do permanent supportive housing outside of the city of Cincinnati, such as Talbot Services, as an opportunity to fund maybe, you know, some of their, their housing projects as well. So we're, we're kind of looking, you know, at every angle and seeing where, we're not waiting for the opportunity to come to us. We're seeing where we can find an opportunity and then plug our dollars into that project to help us spend down those rental dollars. So, but also to increasing the non-congregant shelter.
I don't mean to, I think this is on the mark. I mean, we've talked a lot about shelters for victims of domestic violence. We've also talked a lot about affordable rental housing. And we're partnering with CDF and the city of Cincinnati and private donors, right, to do as much as we can in that space. So I think this is exactly on the mark. I was just wondering how the 400,000 was identified as the most appropriate amount of money to allocate for the domestic violence part of it.
Yeah, so like I said... Yeah, so, like I said, the city's put in an investment, I think, of maybe like five hundred thousand. So, like I said, you know, we can't exceed five or six hundred thousand, um, you know, and we can't exceed that, because then it's not a substantial investment on the city's part, we're kind of matching it. Um, so that's where that dollar amount came from.
But, but you're gonna, pardon me, I'm sorry, I'm taking too much time. But, uh, but there are, there's more than one organization likely to apply for these funds.
Totally agree.
Yeah, so if, if four hundred thousand is appropriate for one project, then that's just gonna sh, shut out everybody else that applies, right? So, that's what I'm getting at. Or, or they don't get the full four hundred, i- is maybe anticipated, but rather, it's split up amongst different organizations. That's, that's kind of, I'm just trying to fill out this number.
Yes, yes, you're, you're right. Um, right now, we are targeting that towards one project. But, um, to increase the non-congregant shelter, uh, allocation, uh, to allow for other agencies that are doing that type of shelter is absolutely fine. We actually would, I mean, we would be on board with that as well.
Something for us to.
The fastest way for, the, the quickest way for us to, to spend down those dollars, especially for the affordable rental housing piece, which is, it's gonna take some work for us to get those funds expended.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question. I think, uh, if you said we can do more, I think we need to know about it, so we can make an educated, uh,
Okay.
answer. Were you, uh, Commissioner Drees?
Yes, um, you had indicated, you really answered the question. You were saying the city gave a substantial investment. You said five or?
About five or six hundred thousand, I believe. But it wasn't their home art, I believe it was out of, um, their, uh, capital funds. Yeah.
So, the criteria is that they have to, the city has to give a substantial investment?
Yeah, they have to have, have funds in that project.
And I thought I heard you say, um, correct me if I'm wrong, that you're targeting this toward one agency?
Yes, um.
And I was just wondering about, what is that about?
Well, well, the, the agency was actually, um, the agency provides domestic, uh, show, uh, non-congregant shelter for, uh, those people, those in, uh, populations experiencing the ve, domestic violence and sexual, uh, abuse or assault, um.
Okay.
Okay. Be discreet here.
Well, I was saying, I don't know if we need to say it at all.
Yeah.
Targeted toward one agency.
Yeah, one agency, and, um, we took a, uh, I guess you could call it the sole source procurement approach to, uh, moving with, forward with this, uh, agency, because they are, uh, the only agency that provides this type of non-congregant shelter for that specific population.
There are actually a, a couple more, uh, that I'm aware of. So, I, I was just, you know, I don't know, since it's transparent and everybody can apply, so whoever applies, you guys will review it and see who gets some of the money, so, okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Just briefly, um, just one, um, uh, comment on the current topic of discussion, then also a process-related issue. Um, so I think as Maria had defined, I think, and where the board is on the four hundred thousand dollar number, I think as the board just said, we'll see how applications come in. Um, and whether there are more, um, entities out there, as there may be, it will also require probably, given this, given the amount of investment needed for this type of capital expansion, it would require someone to also be, at this point in time, going through some type of, of expansion activity that would require some sort of match. Um, so there, it, there could be other entities out there, they just may not be in the process right now of expanding or doing any kind of capital construction.
Right.
This is gonna, uh, fit in with it. So, but, to the point, we will, we'll see what we get, and if we start to see that there's more demand, uh, for these dollars than we have, than we have resources, um, then we'll deliberate on that and come back to the board, and if there's some policy decisions to be made around dollar allocation, we can come back to the board on that. From a process perspective, I think we have a hearing on Thursday. Maria, is that correct?
Yes, um, we have a public hearing this Thursday. And then, uh, after that, uh, I'll come back on the twenty-fifth, uh, to request or seek your approval of the amendment.
So, the hearing is required through the, through, through the ARPA?
Yeah, yeah, it requires that we hold, uh, one public hearing before, uh, with the substantial amendment, and then come back for approval of the, the amendment.
Got it, thank you.
And I wanna, also, you said that the, um, the organization reviewed this? That we have the, what, a community development organization?
Oh, CDAC, the community.
Most people don't know what CDAC is.
I'm sorry, uh, Community Development Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Yes, uh, they did review this. Um, we have not received the application yet, uh, but we have informed them, uh, about the application, about the substantial amendment. Um, and they're just waiting to get the application, but they are, uh, pretty comfortable with the awarded amount, that has, is being, uh, remove, or allocated, and the agency in which it's going to, so. But they'll formally make that recommendation, which I'll present to the board.
I just wanted to make sure. All right, well, we have a public hearing on Thursday.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we'll see you on the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is the ARPA stormwater grant recommendations.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Um, I'm happy to be here before you today to talk about our ARPA-recommended stormwater infrastructure grants. Um, this, the, the board may recall, um, there's an allocation of nine million dollars in our ARPA plan for sewer and stormwater infrastructure. And to date, we've awarded five million to, um, Whitewater Township Regional Sewer District for sewer infrastructure, and, um, about four hundred thousand to Hamilton County Public Health to remedy some cross-connections that are now complete. So, the remaining balance in that line item of roughly three point six million dollars is available for, uh, stormwater grants to help mitigate overland flooding and help strengthen our stormwater collection systems. Um, we, um, opened up the applications, which are open to municipalities, townships, county agencies, and other local government organizations. Applications were open in October, due at the end of November, and we received thirteen applications totaling six point one million dollars. So, we had to do some reductions, obviously, with that amount of applications coming in. I do want to thank our internal review committee, a few of them who are here today. We have Sarah Ferring and, and Che Alberto with the Hamilton County Conservation District. They were part of our review committee. Mohammed Islam, who is here today with our Planning and Development, uh, Division. Um, and of course, you know Sarah Adams and Karen Ball with Administration, they were all part of the review process. In addition, Todd Long, Deputy County Engineer with Hamilton County Engineers Office, provided a lot of technical advice, um, and expertise as well. So, I will say, as I go through the recommendations, if there's any specific project questions, I will be turning it over to Karen and Mohammed for those specific, uh, questions. Um, so, the committee is recommending the full three point six million dollars be, um, funded for eleven projects. This is a tight, tight chart here, but this just shows you everyone that applied and their requested amount and recommendation. Um, I'll go through the, all of them, but as you'll see at the bottom, the two that are not recommended are one in Sims Township and a large request from the city of Cincinnati. Um, so, just quickly going over to summarize each project, uh, the first is Amberly Village. Um, they will replace, replace a failing stormwater infrastructure around a thirty-inch pipe. It will correct date drainage within an area where it is undercutting an access drive that could prevent fire, um, access to this neighborhood if the, um, if the, uh, access were undermined. So, again, this is a hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar request. We're recommending, uh, the full amount. Amberly is matching, uh, with thirty thousand dollars. The Village of Newtown submitted two applications, and we are recommending both. Um, the first, and you can see the lovely flooding problems on State Route Thirty-two near Round Bottom Road here. Um, the village is requesting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help remedy this type of flooding. Um, it's a known problem area in the village if you ever drive through there during heavy rains. So, this, it will, um, provide secondary relief for stormwater in this area. Um, Newtown is, again, recommendation is one fifty. Newtown is putting in seventy-one thousand dollars in match for this project. The second project with Newtown, um, that we are recommending for funding, it will remove this existing retaining wall that's about a thousand feet long that goes downstream. You can see it is failing. And this project will restore the stream bank, um, and prevent flooding and erosion in the streets and the neighborhood, uh, residents and businesses. Newtown is providing, um, a hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred in match funds as well, to correct this project. The Village of Merrimott is requesting, and we're recommending, forty-five thousand, ninety dollars to replace some deteriorated pipe with a hundred and twenty feet of new reinforced concrete pipe, um, near Pleasant Street, and construct a new headwall, headwall at the outfall into Whiskey Creek. This repairing the stormwater pipe and outfall will allow for better flow of stormwater, and it will provide structural support for the Dogwood Park improvements that are, uh, forthcoming. Again, they're requesting just over forty-five thousand, and they are providing a ten percent match of five thousand and ten dollars. Uh, the city of Madeira, uh, will replace stormwater conduit and structures along Euclid Avenue, which is the main stretch throughout Madeira. Additional work includes lining and a repair of an existing culvert. Um, the project will prevent nuisance flooding along Euclid and adjacent properties. And this is also an inter-jurisdictional benefit, as, um, I believe it's in partnership with Sycamore Township. So, a nice partnership there with the surrounding community. And Madeira is providing, um, forty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars in match. Sims Township, Sims Township submitted four grant applications. We're recommending three of them. Um, the first is, uh, thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty dollars for a new, uh, stormwater sewer connection near a new home on Cross Street. This project is needed due to increased runoff during high rainfalls into neighboring homes. This project will contribute to flood hazard redu, reduction, ensuring the stability of the new stormwater system and protect surrounding properties from erosion and flooding. Sims is, um, providing ten thousand in match. The second, um, project in Sims will replace a fifteen-inch storm outlet at the Trewilliger's Ridge Court cul-de-sac, um, that is needed due to a failure of the headwall at the storm sewer outlet. It's causing moderate to severe, uh, erosion. You can see, it's hard to even see it in this photo. So, this, uh, Sims, again, like the other project, is providing ten thousand in match. The last project in Sims that we're recommending funding for, um, is for forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy, they'll install a catch basin at the end of Timberlake Drive and install a new storm sewer pipe. This is needed due to lack of storm sewer, and it's causing drainage to pond at the end of the road, causing roadway flooding, um, in nearby driveways and eroding the walking path. Again, like their other projects, Sim is, Sims is providing ten thousand in match. Uh, Springfield Township, this is a big one. This is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's recommended for funding. Um, this will create a master plan to address the issues related to really catastrophic flooding that's happening in Silly Creek and Congress Run. The preliminary project will include design of this multifaceted issue in order to alleviate the flash flooding that occurs during heavy rains. They've had, I believe, four catastrophic flooding events since two thousand sixteen in this area, including pretty significant damage to, um, local businesses. This will require a multi-jurisdictional effort with city of Cincinnati, Springfield Township, ODOT, MSD, um, due to the, um, given the project location. After this plan is finished, the township will construct the first phase of the project. The township, which is a really nice piece of this project, they will be advocating for green infrastructure, um, low maintenance, uh, low impact, and energy efficient. And as I said before, this project will alleviate significant flooding that causes public safety risks, alleviates property damage, and will improve water quality as the Mill Creek is right there. And, uh, during heavy rains, there is erosion, which causes silt and debris to go into the Mill Creek. Uh, the next project is the city of Montgomery for thirty, three hundred and forty thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, near Hunter's Knoll and Deerfield Road. They are going to be replacing inadequately sized so, storm sewer systems for portions of the project, and provide storm sewer for properties that are currently served by small man-made ditches, uh, with no storm sewer. The current design that will be corrected, um, results in excessive stormwater flooding experienced during large rain events, creating safety hazards to motorists, residential basement flooding, and rear yard flooding. Montgomery is providing an equal amount of match to their request. The project that we are requesting the most funding for is the city of Norwood, in the amount of one point three million dollars. They are providing eight hundred thousand dollars in match. This project will construct a new storm sewer system from the low point of Elm Avenue to a new outfall, um, behind houses along Woodland and Ridgeway Avenues. You can see that, the photos here, uh, of pretty horrific flooding that has occurred. Uh, this will alleviate severe flooding conditions along Elm, as the roadway, obviously, when the roadway floods, it prevents dangerous situation for residents, as well as damages to basement and homes, apartment complexes, businesses, and obviously, you cannot get emergency vehicles down these streets. Uh, the board may remember that Norwood's been looking for funding and asking for funding for this project since two thousand twenty. So, we're really excited to bring forward this recommend, recommendation to you. So, the, the two that are not recommended for funding is the fourth application by Sims. They're requesting a water line, um, replacement in Camp Dennison. This grant is not, is not eligible for water lines at this time, so that was a no. And the city of Cincinnati Stormwater Utility requested two million dollars to rehab approximately seven thousand feet of their stormwater infrastructure, and the committee ranked this one much lower than the other projects mentioned. Mainly, there was no match, it was a significant amount of funding, and, um, it wasn't within the priorities of the, of the grant, so. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I went through those pretty quickly, but I think there's some really good projects here that will definitely help residents and businesses with the flooding that you've seen in some of these photos. And again, I'd like to thank Karen, Mo, and Sarah for their help.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. And, um, I'm, I'm gonna open it up in a second for additional questions, but I just want to say, the Norwood project, uh, this is gonna be, uh, a tremendous impact, uh, in an area that needs this type of infrastructure. Uh, we remember, all of us remember that, uh, flood that day that just came out of nowhere, and there are businesses that never came back. Uh, the roller skating rink there never could recover. Uh, and people were in there roller skating, and the, and the skates came off the shelves and down the street, and to this day, we still don't know how all that came about. And I remember I was at the, uh, State House at that time. Uh, the Krogers, people come out of Krogers, and the water was all the way up to the top of their car windows. And, of course, since then, there's never been any, uh, relief. So, this is huge, um, I was, I'm extremely happy that this is being recommended, uh, for Norwood, and certainly the others as well, but, uh, you know, they have to get this fixed, that the, the residents there and the, the impact of the small businesses and residents, that they've just been taken a pounding, so. I was ha, I'm very happy to see this in the recommendation, uh, and certainly am very supportive of it. Uh, I'll open it up, Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you, uh, thank you for the presentation, Holly. Um, I too was at the State House when that flooding took place. It was a flash flood. That was when I was first introduced to Nick Crossley. Because all the applications had to go through Nick Crossley, and I thought, who the heck is Nick Crossley anyway? Um, so now we all know Nick Crossley, and he's our, our, our partner in all things. Why do? No, you're right.
We didn't know him at the State House. We saw the name, but we were like, Nick Crossley.
So anyways, um, yeah, so Norwood really suffered, um, from that flash flooding. And that was kind of the beginning of some of those really heavy storm events. Um, so I too am glad that Norwood is going to receive some funding. This, um, report reminds me of how much work needs to be done countywide related to stormwater, and, um, how mu- and how much money it takes for just some of, and these look like, except for the Norwood project, they're relatively small projects, and yet they're so expensive for these communities. So I'm delighted that we're able to partner in this way. I, I'm glad that we set aside this funding for this purpose because we hear a lot about overland flooding and stormwater issues. So I hope more to come from different funding sources related to stormwater projects. We're, we've been working on this with different agencies to see if we can start to methodically address some of these things, but this is a nice chunk to get off the table. So thank you to you and your team for putting this in front of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Just a few questions as it relates to the packet that you gave out, the applications received. Was it, was a match a criteria of requesting the funds?
It was not required, but as part of the evaluation criteria, which was publicized, you received points if you did provide a match.
Okay. And so it's just really ironic to me that the city asked for 2 million with no match. And so, but I'll move on from there. One specifically, Holly, which one was it? The Congress Run, you didn't indicate what match they had given for the 850,000.
They are providing, since they're leading the project, 125 for, in staffing costs.
Okay.
My apologies.
Oh, that's no problem. And I would like, I don't know if my colleagues would like it also, but if you could maybe make another column that says the match and how much each one gave, because it's always good to know that, for me, anyway. Just a few comments. We've talked a lot, as we said earlier, about overland, overland funding and how we can fund that. So this is just really great. It's, and I know MSD, you know, they don't have a lot of money for that, but I would also like to say I'm really happy about the group that looked at this because it was an effort to fund a diverse group of projects. And so we went all over trying to, oftentimes, I know at the beginning, as we started this process years ago, it was like the same people were getting it. So I was really excited about the diversity of the projects. And I'm also excited about it said in there that since we kept within budget, we don't have to have an amendment. So that speeds things up for us, and I'm really happy about that because people put in, and it, it just takes a while to get what you've been allocated. And you included the, and we've said this before, and you guys have gotten really smart because often say, well, who didn't get it? And it's either not there, not recently, or there's no summary of why they didn't get it. So I especially am happy about that, and I appreciate it. And I thought the summaries of all the projects were so concise, well thought out, and I could understand completely why they were accepted and why they were not. There was another part on here said there would be a review by the prosecutors, and, you know, and we would say, you said in here that in March, that we might get the proposal to approve this after the prosecutors did their thing. And I just wish, I guess, Jeff, I'm kind of directing this to you, if we could recommend, I don't know how they could do it because they sometimes say they're short on staff, maybe one person that looks at the board agreements and assigns themselves to this particular project rather than, I don't know if they do that or not, but it takes so long, we move quickly here on the board to try to get it done, and then we have to wait a significant amount of time with the prosecutors. And so it takes March, I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's not just the prosecutor's office. What actually takes the longest is getting the, the contract back from the communities. So that, we, we do have one prosecutor assigned to the American Rescue Plan, and she's unbelievable, unbelievable, yes. Carrie Dowling is unbelievable. But it's really then we have to get it to the communities. Sometimes they, they most likely have to have their counsel or trustees approve it, which depending on the schedule, depending how many, you know, do we catch them at the right time? So it's not, it's definitely not the prosecutor's office. It's, it's more the time it takes for the communities to review, to get it approved, and get it back to us, yeah.
So do we give them a timeline of when to return it?
Sarah works with them really closely and keeps on them. And really, the March date is probably a worst case. We'll, we'll try and get it before, the agreements before the board as soon as possible, yeah.
So Sarah, is there a timeline, like within 30 days or two weeks?
I always try to request them back within 30 days.
Sarah, I'm sorry, I have to come to the microphone.
I always try to request them back within 30 days, but I also try to be receptive that sometimes people are out, some people are on leave. I know some people are, have had a lot of turnover with, you know, attorneys and different things and different processes for making sure that we get those back. And sometimes there's negotiations that do occur due to sometimes a budget might change or different things like that. So we try to be receptive to those changes, but that's also why we also, as we complete each contract, we go ahead and bring those to the board instead of holding all of them to one meeting. We try to just go ahead and bring those forward as quickly as possible to you guys so they can get going on those projects.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. So we'll wait to hear back from you. Is that where we're at now? Okay.
Bring the contracts back as they come back.
Okay, well, we're excited to get moving as quick as we can, as indicated. Okay, that is it. If there's nothing else, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.